Before we get started with the meeting, we're going to have a roll call vote. I am the chair for the county planning, and we'll start with that, and then we'll move on to the city, and Eric Nyberg is here for the city planning. Jeff Barth?
Here.
Anna Morehauser?
Here.
Doug Odie?
Here.
Mike Ralston?
Here.
Becky Randall?
Here.
Ryan Bader Flit?
Here.
Bonnie DePpe. Eric?
Good evening, city commissioners. We'll do a roll call vote on our side as well. Commissioner Ervin.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Nissis.
Here.
Commissioner Norman.
Here.
Commissioner Paulson.
Here.
We have a quorum on the city side.
Thank you. Good evening. I call to order this regular joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone in the meeting room tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be recorded live and available for viewing by members of the public afterwards on the www.minhahacounty.org site. In observance of the CDC guidelines for social distancing, tonight's meeting is taking place simultaneously within the county commission meeting room and virtually within a Zoom meeting room online. In the Zoom meeting room, each individual user on the line will be on mute to maintain communication clarity for everyone. Every item listed on the agenda will be read separately. If any member of the public wishes to be heard on an item, you may raise your hand while I read the item description. If hands are raised, we will follow our normal hearing procedure by requesting planning staff to present a report on each item, and then request the petitioner to come to the podium and make a statement or answer any questions. And anyone from the audience wishing to address this item shall be recognized by planning staff in the order hands are raised, state their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission will then discuss this matter and take appropriate action. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Please either raise your hand, or if you are attending remotely, and staff will call on you, and I'll mute your microphone for comment.
No hands are raised.
Thank you, David. Okay, item number one on the agenda is the minutes from the January 25th Joint Planning Commission meeting. Are there any comments or changes to the minutes?
Move approval of the minutes.
That.
I have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the January 25th meeting. Roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
Ryan Bader Flit?
Aye.
Minutes are approved on the county side. Eric?
City Commissioners, the minutes have been approved on the county side. Do we have a motion on the city side?
Lukey, I'll make a motion for approval. Second.
Second.
A motion and a second. We will go ahead and take a roll call vote. Commissioner Ervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Nissis?
Yes.
Commissioner Norman?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved on the city side.
Thank you. Item number two is a conditional use permit, and any final action taken on this conditional use permit tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, March 1st at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the Joint County Commission and City Council for a hearing on Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, at or after 5:00 PM. That meeting is held in Carnegie Town Hall at 235 West 10th Street. All right, I'm going to next read the description of item number two, and if anyone wishes to comment on this item, now would be the time to raise your hand. Item number two is conditional use permit 21-17 to allow expansion of the current private airport in the northwest quarter of Section 32 and have it open to the public on the properties legally described as Track 2A Resurrection Edition, that is the north half and the north half, except Tracks 8 and 9, Costello Edition, and except Resurrection Edition, and the southwest quarter, the southeast quarter, except Hine Edition, and except Klein's Tracks 1 and 2, and Klein's Track Number 1, southeast quarter, all in Section 32 Township 101 North, Range 50 West. Petitioners are Tom Monan and Todd Broyn. Property owner is the same. It's one mile west of Sioux Falls. Kevin?
Yes, good evening, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As you noted in the reading of this, this is to allow an expansion of a private airport on the property as described, and the map is displayed in front. The petitioner, this expansion would include expanding the private airstrip to include longer runways and to expand several adjacent properties, and would allow aircraft other than the petitioner's to take off and land on the strip. This also expansion would be to allow storage and refueling of these aircraft on a portion of the airport. I would note that this current airstrip was approved in 2013 by conditional use permit number 1304, and if this airport expansion is denied, the 2013 airport will just stand as it is. I also will note that today's decision is on the expansion only, and today you'll hear a lot about this expansion being the hopes to become a residential airpark. As a residential airpark, this is going to be the first phase of this kind of approval process for the petitioner. He has met with the city and the county several times on how the process would go to get what he would like to get done, and there will be more meetings and approvals based on how he wants to get the residential aspect of his proposal completed. And those future meetings will happen at a later time if this is approved. All right, the property is located approximately one mile west of Sioux Falls, and a little bit shorter in some places, between the county highway 148, which is the extension of 41st Street, and 268th Street, which is the extension of 57th Street in Sioux Falls. Oh, I wish I had my mouse. There are some residential properties. I'll try to point them out with my mouse. Maybe you'll see them on the other side to the west of the site. There's the Sioux Falls residential properties to the northeast, and there are some residential properties right here that you can't see on the map very well, and then there's a few to the east side here. The petitioner has submitted a site plan, which I'll bring up here. Site plan indicates that the primary runway will extend the existing runway to a length of 4,100 feet, and that will be paved. This runway also would include some landing lights for nighttime takeoff and landings. This also includes two smaller runways, which would remain grass strips at this time, and they would run in kind of a triangle pattern around the main runway. And as I mentioned, part of this expansion is to include hangars and a refueling area, and that would be to the south of the main runway where road access would come off of the 268th Street, which is the extension of 57th, and have access to some hangars and temporary holding areas and refueling. As any conditional use permit considered by the Planning Commission, there are some criteria that needs to be reviewed. Criteria A, the impact of the proposed use on the adjacent property shall be a major consideration. The proposed use should be generally compatible with adjacent properties and other properties in the district. This immediate area has not significantly changed since the original airstrip was approved in 2013. It's largely agricultural based with some rural residential around it. The city of Sioux Falls has expanded closer to the northeast corner of the property. Future impacts of the surrounding area will primarily surround safety zones near the ends of each runway. Planning staff has concerns with the height, or has seen concerns with height restrictions possible due to the runways, and the Planning Commission may consider other options for approval regarding like lights and screening and that sort of thing as part of the impacts in the surrounding neighbors. B, measures shall be taken to ensure the proposed use does not alter the general character of the area or neighborhood. As noted earlier, this is primarily agriculture with mixed of low-density residential. The airport will create a visible runway with lights and possible increase in traffic along 268th Street where the air hangars are and refueling areas. The Planning Commission may consider conditions to alleviate these concerns, and staff would recommend also adding that a road maintenance agreement be placed on the property for the 268th Street where added traffic might increase undue wear onto the road. Criteria C, that the effects of noise, odor, traffic, air and water pollution, and other negative factors shall be eliminated or controlled through the use of screen setbacks or orientation. As an airport, it does have the potential to produce negative factors, including noise, light, and traffic. Mitigation of these nuisances is going to be difficult, but the scale of the project may reduce some of the nuisances as it is. The petitioner has suggested that the goal is to have the residential airpark, so once residential dwellings appear on the property, some of these screening things and issues may be alleviated through houses and trees and neighborhoods around the area. Staff does list in the staff report that the noise, lighting, and traffic is to be part of this, and other conditions as noted could be used to mitigate nuisances. And then criteria D, that the proposed use shall not adversely affect the public. As a new airport, this is not going to be an airport that would have commercial passenger flights, so will not conflict with the Sioux Falls Regional Airport. This will be used for private aviation of individuals and companies. Others may be able to utilize the airport at the owner's discretion. It is likely that some height restrictions will recur at the ends of the runways. Height restrictions are generally higher than typical low-density zonings, but may affect future urban development. As stated earlier, there may be an increase in volume of traffic along 268th Street, and you can have a road maintenance agreement for that. No public money will be used for the construction and maintenance of this airport, and security will be all on the private airport operators and the owners. And then finally, the health, safety, general welfare of the public in comprehensive plan should be considered as the request, part of the request. The proposed airport is located within the transition area of the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan, and this is to preserve land near the municipality for future annexation, but it also, if you look at the Sioux Falls 2040 comprehensive plan, it is located outside of the future land use map, so there's no intent of using this land for the next 20 years. The proposed request is to expand a private airport. The petitioner has made it well known that this is to create a residential airpark, and this is a new concept, and the hybrid of uses between airport and residential, which may someday provide some compatibility with more than a traditional airport. The county planning staff does find that the proposed airport expansion is an expansion of existing use and is compatible over the large areas proposed. The Planning Commission may consider other conditions, and staff is recommending approval, or county planning staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 2117 with four conditions, and I'll read those out. The conditional use permit will allow a private airport with no commercial passenger flights allowed. Two, that the operator of the airport must obtain an ongoing road maintenance agreement with the township which maintains 268th Street. The road maintenance agreement must cover all the township maintained roads east of the street entrance located on the south side of the airport. Number three, the airport shall meet all FAA requirements. And number four, the airport must obtain all required state approvals prior to constructions. And the petitioner has submitted some materials, and I believe that he has some things that he's going to want to say, so I'll leave that open to questions for me and staff. Other than that, we can go to the petitioner.
Any questions for Kevin at this time?
This is John Paulson. I have a question. Can you hear me?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, what's the reason that a conditional use permit is required if it's only an expansion of an existing use?
As an expansion, it would not meet the existing use. With the existing use, it's only allowed for his own personal airplane. It doesn't allow nighttime flying, and I believe the original site plan, it doesn't meet the requirements of the original site plan as well either.
What were the original conditions on the permit when it was approved back in 2013?
I have them right over here, if you hold on just a moment. So the original conditions had four conditions. The airport shall be used only for the petitioner's private use. No commercial use shall be operated from the premises. The hours of operation to the airport shall be limited to the hours between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Outdoor lighting of the runways is prohibited, and the airport shall meet all FAA requirements. Those are the conditions.
So quite a change.
Yes.
What's the difference between public and private?
So that question has been asked to me on a few occasions, and it might be better to ask the petitioner that, but for the purposes of this petition, it doesn't actually matter. The airport is an airport, and that is an allowed use in the rural area.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Kevin? It's not at this time. Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward, state your name and address?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Greg Jamison, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, speaking on behalf of the petitioners who are here. Just to introduce them, it's Tom Monan and Todd Broyn, so you know who they are, as well as Mark Widerick, who is the aviation expert airport engineer who is here, back here behind the pillar. We just wanted to add some faces to the project. This is, I'm with Jamison Company Real Estate, but I'm also an avid aviation person, and that's part of my interest in this project, and that's where Tom and I got connected years ago on this project. And, you know, our goal long-term, as was stated, is to create a first-class residential airpark. Residential is the key, not intended to ever be a commercial site. And based on the neighborhood meeting, meetings with the county and meetings with the city, it would not go on further if it is not a residential airpark. We just want to make that kind of really crystal clear. They want to make a first-class residential airpark. And we know this is complicated. It's different. It's unique. None of us probably have any experience ever doing this before, but that's kind of the fun part about it. This could be a great asset for the city of Sioux Falls, and like a feather in our cap, because it's unique. Other states and other places, there's like 13,000 of these around the country. South Dakota doesn't have one. We think, as Sioux Falls grows, more people will be inclined to move here potentially because of an asset like this, and so we see it as an asset. We did submit a few pictures. I know Kevin had them in his presentation, because you may not have ever seen one of these, and so we wanted to make sure you had at least a visual concept of what an airpark looks like. This is one in Illinois. I think both of these pictures are from Illinois. Just to help give you a concept, if they weren't in your presentation, think of it like a golf course or a lake, and you have your boats that can get on the lake, or maybe it's the back of your home and the golf course is back there, but this is an airport. And we get it. We understand there are differences. It's not the same exactly, but the concept is that. Your hangar would be behind your home, and you would have access to the airway or the airstrip from the back of your home. All of those roads would be intended to only have an airplane on them. An airplane and the vehicle are not going to be able to intersect the runway. Security and management and development design of that would all be handled in appropriate fashion. And I know this is down the road a little bit, because our question tonight is really about the approval of the conditional use, which allows public access to this runway, as well as lengthening it for sure. But without the public's access to it, it just turns into Tom and Todd's private little airport. And I think long-term, there's a bigger plan for all of this. We also have a couple of videos that we had, and it'll only take a few minutes. We want to give you a full illustration of what we intend to develop. Kevin could help me start one, start them.
It says on screen sharing.
So Greg, you just don't like driving to Pier, right?
My departure, if I will, is to Pier immediately following this. I wish I had a plane. I don't, but yes, I'll be right back to Pier. While we're setting this up, if, okay, let's see if you're ready. That one right there, yep. I don't know the volume, but... On this video, the volume isn't as important as this next video, but this hopefully will show you just an overview of the layout, of how these things operate. What you'd likely find is enthusiasts who have their own personally-built plane or a small private plane. Certainly, the runway is long enough, in this case, 41,000 feet, to allow for small jets to use this runway. The likelihood of a lot of individuals who have access to a jet, pending our governor who is looking for a jet, I'd had to throw that in, I'm sorry, if she's listening, it's all due respect. Not everybody's going to have access to a jet, but the intentions are to build this runway in a way that could be used for many years to come, and who knows where the future of a small jet could go. Easily could work here. So if you see how these planes are utilizing it out in the proximity of the homes to the runway, it's an interesting concept. If you're an aviator, have your own plane, you may love this, because in some places, like for instance, if you have a plane parked out at T, you've got to go to the airport, park your car, get your airplane out of the runway, or out of the hangar, bring it out to the, and take off. Well, now consider the idea of just getting up, having a cup of coffee, walking out of your back door, and driving it out of the hangar and taking off. It's just like your boat, having a boat and a ramp, having to go to the public access point to put your boat in, compared to having your boat in the back of your yard. Or a golf cart, and then you want to get on the course. You could easily just jump right on your car and drive out the back. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of the view. I think we could switch to the other, is there any way to get any volume?
I don't know. That's the first time we've done this.
Oh, great. Time for... This video really is just another illustration, but it talks a lot about others who live at airports that aren't pilots. So this first-class residential airpark can really fit for a lot of people. Don't think that it's specifically only if you're a pilot, because the way the airpark is intended to be built will suit all kinds of people, and maybe they have a friend who has an airplane that could come visit. So that's really what we wanted to talk about in this video, and I guess if I could wrap it up real quick, is the idea that the applicants agree with all the conditions that the county would put on the stipulations, the stipulations for this conditional use. They agree with those and will accept those, as well as a pre-annexation agreement with the city. They want to be a good partner in the city. They want to be a good neighbor, and so they are willing to enter into that pre-annexation agreement, so there won't be a problem down the road on this when the city does get to it. The reason we're here out today is because we've been trying to get ahead of the growth of the city as fast as we can, so that we can be in this transition area and make this work. So we'll stand by. We've got experts on airport questions here, from an engineer who knows all the FAA rules, can deal with all the noise issues and other questions you may have, as well as the owners. We stand by for any questions, and we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Greg, you were actually representing the petitioners. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Guess we'll move on. Are there any proponents out there that would like to speak to this item? Would you like to step forward, sir, and state your name and address?
Dave Dangle, 26723 468th Avenue. I live in the, I've got that little green patch in the northeast corner of the section up there, so I would have a grass runway on the left and a grass runway on the right. And those would seldom be used, it just depends on the wind. You know, our prevailing winds are kind of northwest and southeast. I would urge you to support this. I think it's a good use of this land. I think it will be good for our property values. These are going to be upscale homes, and they'll be spread out. Maybe someday, a long way down the road, they'll be as packed, excuse me, as packed in as you saw on that film. I don't think noise will be a factor. It couldn't be any worse than the garbage trucks going down 41st Street bouncing through the ruts on the street, making noise. The motorcycles, particularly after 5:00, I live not too far off 41st Street, and you can't believe the roar from, we call them the crotch rockets, that go up and down 90, 100 miles an hour. We also, the current air traffic for Sioux Falls Regional is just to the east. We also, the current air traffic for Sioux Falls regionally is just to the east of my place. I see the big jets come and go all day long, half for years. You don't even really notice them. They're close enough, I can see the landing gear come down. I think, as I said, I think it'll increase the value of our property. It certainly isn't going to decrease the value of the property. We could have much worse uses for this. I remember not too many years ago, some of us were here when a corporation out of Minnesota wanted to put 110 acres of, of solar panels just to the south. And eventually, that was, that was voted down. I've known Tom for quite a few years. I trust him. His word is good. He's been a good neighbor. Often, he mows all our road ditches for us up and down 41st Street and on 468th Avenue. I think this will be good for potential growth of Sioux Falls and the surrounding area. As this metropolitan area grows, and it certainly has been growing the last 20 years, it'll provide a use that I think will be a benefit to the community as we continue to grow. And I, I just would urge your support of this project. Thank you.
Are you a proponent?
Yeah.
Okay, we just step forward, sir. State your name and address.
I'm Wayne Larson, 26865 468th Avenue. I own the property across, south across the road, right off of the, the south end of the main runway there. And, you know, from, I, I would basically agree with everything that your previous speaker said. I, I think that this would be a, a good use for that land. There's some, some real potential there to have some upscale housing in that area. And I, I don't really have any major concerns that the one runway is going to end up across from my property. I, I think, like Mr. Dangle said, we've, we've got airplanes that fly all over the place around us, the way it is right now. So I, I see no reason not to approve this.
Hi there. Kristy Staton, 26793 467th Avenue. Our property is directly to the west, and these gentlemen pretty much covered it all. My husband and I, a few other neighbors that are here, we are very much in support of this as well. We think it's just a grand idea.
Thank you. Any other proponents out there? Any hands raised at all?
No hands are raised.
Thanks, David. Okay, then we'll move on to the opponents. Is there any of you out there that wish to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
My name's Sam Goodhope. I'm one of the owners of property that is about a half mile to the north of this. I don't doubt Tom's sincerity when he says that this is a dream of his. I'm sure it is. I own an airplane. I love to fly. I, I think it's a great idea. I just don't know if this is the right place for it. The decision is ultimately yours to determine what you're going to use this land for. Is it going to be residential? If it is, then it's incompatible with an airport, the surrounding ground. All the literature that I've seen, and I believe it's been provided to you, indicates that residential, single-family dwelling is not compatible with an airport. Part of the reason is because we have runway protection zones. And when you have a runway protection zone, you have to look at the size and the height of the buildings, and what are the buildings used for. Also, you know, there's three ways in order to go about acquiring runway protection zones. One is you buy it, so that you own that property. The second is you get easements from those property owners, so that you can, they're very well aware that you're going to be flying airplanes through that runway protection zone. The last is, the way they're going about it is to obtain zoning. So I don't know what the outlook is for the county or the commissioners in terms of how they foresee the surrounding property being used, but if it's residential, single-family dwelling, it's just incompatible with an airport. The T Airport is approximately 4.3 or 4.8 miles to the south and a little bit to the east. So you're going to be having traffic coming from there also, that you're going to have to contend with as a pilot. The other thing that you need to factor in is subsequent building in this area has to take into consideration the FAA regulations. And some of those regulations pertain to building height. And what they're proposing is essentially three runways. So we have runway protection zones going out each direction of each one of these runways, so six different runway protection zones. That will affect what buildings can be constructed in each one of these directions. Another consideration that has to be factored into is mortgages and land values. The mortgages, FHA requires you to identify a runway protection zone, and they will not give loans to individuals that are constructing a condominium unit, if they're in a runway protection zone. The other is appraisals, and I believe that you've received a copy of a report or an opinion letter from Chris Vinson pertaining to that, that if you're in a runway protection zone, that is to be taken...
Our technical fellow, we need to speak into the microphone a little more.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you. No, no, it's, he let me know.
One of the things that need to be taken into consideration is, if you have property within that runway protection zone, it will be affected. Now, I'm not talking about the properties immediately to the sides of this airport or to these runways. I'm talking about the properties that are deemed to be in the runway protection zone out these six different directions. For those reasons, we're asking you to deny the conditional use permit, or the expansion of the conditional use permit.
Any other opponents out there that wish to speak?
I did have a question for Tom. This is Larry.
Would you step forward, sir? Someone's going to question for you, and then I will address that other individual.
Hi, I'm Tom Monen, 46717...
This is Larry. I wanted to know how much the, or how far the protection zone is for these runways.
The depth of the protection zone?
Yeah, like, does it go based on miles or feet or...
No. Do what? Sure, I would. I have a guy that can speak more intelligently about it.
I'm Mark Weiderich with K L J Engineering, here in Sioux Falls, 1908 Firestone Lane is where I live. I am an airport engineer. Our firm, K L J Engineering, does airport engineering work for about 25 airports in South Dakota and over 80 airports throughout the Midwest. So that's, that's all that I do, is, is work on airports. Specifically, I have been the airport engineer for the Sioux Falls Airport for the last 21 years, as well as many of the surrounding smaller general aviation airports. To address Mr. Goodhope's question and...
Madam and Mr. Chair, can we have the speaker speak up a little louder, please?
Sure.
Yeah. Is that, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, all right. To address the question about runway protection zones and how far do they go, I want to clarify the terminology a little bit better. There's, I believe what Mr. Goodhope is referring to on runway protection zones is actually the approach zones. The approach zones are the airspace surfaces that extend, and I don't know, can I point with a mouse on, on this? The, the approach zones are the airspace surfaces that extend out beyond the end of the runways and go up with height. Those are height-restricted zones. What's considered the runway protection zone is actually a trapezoid that is off the end of each runway, and it's just a footprint on the ground. The purpose of that runway protection zone is to protect anything that's on the ground. What the FAA has found that, in the rare case when aviation accidents do occur, the highest percentage of those occur within a runway protection zone. The runway protection zones, as Mr. Goodhope stated, they are encouraged to be acquired. And Mr. Monen is proposing to do that. The runway protection zones for these runways are starting 200 feet off the end of the runway. They are 200 feet wide, and then they expand out to 450 feet wide, over a distance of 1,000 feet of length. As you see how he's got his runways positioned on his property, the runway protection zones all fall within his own property or within the right-of-way of the surrounding section line roads. The runway protection zones do not extend onto any surrounding properties at all. The part that does extend onto surrounding properties are the approach zones, and that's the height restrictions. The approach zone off this particular runway, or off of any of these runways, goes up in a trapezoidal shape at a 20-to-1 slope. So a 20-to-1 slope is, is one feet vertically for 20 feet horizontally, or 5%. As far as height restrictions go, the height of the, and if we could pull up a graphic, Part 77 graphic. Yeah, let's you. Part 77 W O T P A on those files I gave you. That one, yep, that one, yep.
So what you're saying is that the, the zones that, you know, they're talking about FHA financing. And I know the T Airport had this, the same problem, where I know, I think Kelly Nielsen was trying to build some storage units down there, and every time he tries to do something above 10 feet, he has to get a, an approval. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not putting other property owners at a disadvantage to advantage this property owner. So that's, that's kind of my concern of...
Yeah. Yes, I can, I can expand on that, then. So, and again, it's a terminology thing. The runway protection zone is, is just that footprint on the ground, right off the end of the runway, that will be on its own property. And so as far as the FHA loans go to, they're referring to a runway protection zone, and that does not fall on anybody else's property. The approach zones affect the height. So in this diagram, this is, these shaded areas are, are what are called the FAA's Part 77 surfaces. And these are those protective surfaces that go off of an airport, and particularly off the end of runways. I believe, Mr. Goodhope, the, the property you're referring to is up to the northeast. Is that correct?
Northeast.
Yeah. So at the end of this runway, this slope that's coming off and heading out across 41st Street and onto Mr. Goodhope's property, goes up at that 20-to-1 slope, 5%. We looked at all of the contours that fall on his land. The most restrictive height restriction occurs on a little high point on his ground, about 500 feet back, north of 41st Street. And the, the height limitation of that particular spot would be 73 feet. So I don't believe there's anything that, that could be built there that would exceed 73 feet in height. And then, as, as it progresses, Mr. Goodhope's land actually drops off. The approach zone is, is increasing in height, and his land is dropping off, so you get up into the hundreds of feet of clearance. So we really don't see any height restrictions that would impact that property whatsoever. Does that address the question?
So what you're saying, that purple, that purple area, is that height restricted?
Yes, it is.
That what?
Yeah. So the way these surfaces work, so starting at, at the runway elevation, this trapezoid here goes up at a 20-to-1, that 5% slope. Then these side pieces transition laterally, sideways at a 7-to-1, a much steeper slope, up until it hits what's called this purple surrounding area, which is a radius 5,000 feet, or roughly a mile around the airport. And that surf, that circle is, is a flat cone top at a restriction of 150 feet above the runway elevation. And keeping in mind that these runway elevations are slightly higher than this ground, so it would be at least 150 feet that would be allowed in all of this purple area. And then the red area beyond that continues to slope upward even further. So none of these surrounding properties should have any height restrictions that, beyond that, that most critical point that we saw at 73 feet.
And so you're saying that currently, but if, if someone wanted to build something in that area, they couldn't build anything to that height, correct?
That is correct. Right. At that particular point, the process, the process, whether it's a private airport or a public airport, you do have to go through, and if you're within these approach zones, there's an online application to build something, simply filling out the application. But the FAA would come back and, and limit that, limit that height to the surface of 73 feet in that particular point, in the worst-case scenario.
Larry, did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Anyone else have any questions for him?
Madam Chair, I have a question. I know for the time being, of course, we're just talking about this conditionally permit here, but with the goal of having this residential park, if you will, I was kind of struck by the imagery when you see these residences that are so close to this runway. Anything that I've ever come to, you know, there's nothing for longways on either side of the runway. Can you talk to me a little bit about the FAA approval, getting structures that are residents that are close on the side of the runway themselves?
Yes. And so that's all based on runway size and the size of aircraft they're using each individual airport. This particular airport, it is a private airport, so Tom doesn't necessarily need to follow all those FAA guidelines, guidelines. There are a lot of airparks in the country, and that may have been one, that you saw the video, where they can build closer than the FAA would recommend if it were a public airport. However, with that said, Tom has instructed me to do the layout in the, in the interest of the utmost safety. We are applying all FAA design standards to that. The primary surface, it's called the, the, the clear area that is on the ground adjacent to the runway, is called the primary surface. For this classification of a runway, and, and what I mean by classification, that's based on the size of aircraft they're using it. The size that can use this is, is called a, a Group 1, which are the smallest aircraft. The primary surface width is 250 feet. So in this particular airpark that, that we'll be working on, no house could be built within, within 250 feet of that, of the center, or of that runway, or 125 feet from the center on out. I'm sorry, 250 total feet, total width. So it's basically, it's about a city, city block clear green space down that runway corridor.
Anyone else have any questions for him?
Actually, I do have one more question. So what's the difference between public and private? Every, I've done a little research, and everything kind of talks about public airports, and private airports are totally different, so...
So a private airport, my understanding of a private airport is one that is privately-owned, not, not a government entity-owned, and that is under the control of a private ownership, and so that individual can control what happens, who, who lands and who doesn't at that airport by permission. A public airport is typically... A public airport is typically referred to an airport that receives funding through, through a public entity and through the FAA. It's called, so it's called the NIPIA system when you're on the, the public airport list, and then you're, you become part of the essential airport group that receives annual entitlement funding from the FAA to maintain and improve that airport. When you become a publicly funded airport, then with that, a whole bunch of grant assurances, what you have to do, the standards you have to maintain to continue receiving that FA funding to maintain that public status.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for him? Thank you. You're no opponent, will you please come forward, sir, and state your name and address?
Rick Dunlap, 46810 267th Street. I just live kitty-corner is, uh, where this airport is. I'm also, I grew up out here, and over the years, I'm involved in the development there. And we've accumulated now, we had about 600 acres there yet to develop, to the north and northeast. The one gentleman talked about some of this, is FHA, VA, HUD, any house that's built from the last runway, 2,500 feet out from the end of the runway, is they may not finance it. Is you have to disclose, if you're in a, within 2,500 feet, anybody who buys a home has to sign a disclosure. I don't know how familiar a lot of you people are with the West Side, is we are in a major growth area here. Is, I always tell the story, is when I got my driver's license when I was 14, I grew up in that old farm out there, is the end of Sioux Falls was a Gorman. Forty years later, we're out here, and we're a quarter mile within where he wants to put the airport. In another 30, 35 years, we'll be out to Highway 17. The city's going to continue to grow that direction. The road to the east is your next mile line, so that's your next Marion Road. There's a vacated section line that'll be opened up as we continue to develop. So on the corner there, that'll be, if you can envision this, Marion Road, Zatoma Avenue. You're talking gas stations. The trend now is to build very large apartment buildings. The ground is very expensive. If you go to 57th and Sycamore, it's one of the largest complexes, five, six-story stall. I believe in property rights. We bought this to develop it, we're not farmers. This is a use issue, and they're going, it's going to affect what we can do with our property. Years ago, he got a permit for one runway for himself. Now he's asking for three runways to open to the public. Is if you were even considering this, they would ask you that you only let him have the one runway. If you do some of the studying and look at some of these air parks, most of them only have one runway. But that is going to be a major intersection. Is down on the corner, Lloyd Company just bought 23 acres for $187,000 an acre. This is the next piece of property that's worth a lot of money. If this airport goes there, that affects us greatly. And I'd like to you guys to consider denying this. Thank you.
Come forward, state your name and address, please.
I'm John Brook. I'm with Equity Homes, I'm with Westwood Valley.
Make sure to use the microphone.
I'm a real estate developer, partner with, with, with some of the properties that they're talking about. I have other properties also that will be affected by this. So I, I love the concept, I just hate it where it is. You guys have to, you guys are in the planning, this is where you become very important. You have, you have to think about the people besides the people that are petitioning. I have to think about the people that, besides that are petitioning, because we build about 100 homes a year, and these planes will be flying directly over all those homes that are coming. You have to look at this as not the way it looks today. Like this looks like it's outside the city limits of Sioux Falls. Rick was right, the, the growth rates in this area, there's some sewer issues, but those are coming, we're going to have sewer. This airport will be in the middle of a city, and the pictures that you saw with, with the mansions that were on there, they have to be that big of a home, they have to be people that can pay cash, you can't finance them. If, they might have a bank that they work with real closely that would finance them because the people have great assets, but having houses by that airport, there's no way that a normal, any kind of government financing, that any kind of South Dakota housing, any kind of state or federal financing would finance those houses. So yes, huge monetary issues for us. Two, two, two runways going right over top of this, how about putting them the other way? I don't want any runways coming towards us. We have no choice but to fight it, you know? You guys have to look at it like, this isn't a piece of rural property, you have to look like you're taking this and setting it on the outskirts, surrounded by houses in the city of Sioux Falls. Is Sioux Falls growing? I think that's pretty apparent. This area will be surrounded by homes, you're going to have an airport in the middle of it. It needs to go further out, further away from all, we're, overall, the target development is coming. So that's what I would, I would ask you to recommend, or make sure that you, you consider very greatly, is that, not rural, the future is, this is in the middle, and houses surround you. All those areas where, where it's restricted, there won't be houses because they can't. So when you, when you, when you, when you think about it, is it affecting the neighbors? Absolutely. The people that are already there, they don't need to pull a permit, they don't need to finance their houses. That's why they're probably for it. I think it's a good idea, I think it's beautiful, it could be a great deal, but not in the city. And if it's, if it's a benefit to the city, it'll be a benefit if it's five miles, 10 miles further away, and that, the use there would be much better, so, thank you.
Anybody else care to speak to this item? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Uh, Craig Stateon.
Speaking to the mic, please.
Craig Stateon, 267, what is that, Kristy? It's on 467th Avenue. It sounds like to me that the guys here that just spoke, they're, sound like they're dictating how the city grows. I thought you guys decided on how the city, what direction the city grows. Am I wrong? Nobody going to answer?
We make decisions on land and, and what goes there, but.
Well, I thought you guys were in charge of how the city grew, though, which direction? No? I guess I'm wrong in asking that.
Anybody else care to speak to this item? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Monte Miller, I live at 1306 Honeysuckle Trail, and, and I'm a retired civilian, and I spent 30 years with Sayer Associates here in Sioux Falls, and I've done numerous development projects over my career with Sayer Associates, but I've known Tom Monin and Todd Bryant for, for a long time, and, and I've worked with them on several development projects, including University Hills, which is a first-class multifamily development, and North Marion, Haley Park, another residential project on North Marion. Then my firm and I also worked on the Lake Lorraine Project with Freezing Construction, but I believe Tom and Todd have just an amazing entrepreneurial spirit and have the ability to bring this project to successful fruition. Tom has spent many years studying air parks and the effect on surrounding properties. I believe they're, I believe what they're planning and what they create will be a very high-quality project and will enhance the quality of life in Sioux Falls, so I just think the project will be an incredible asset for the city of Sioux Falls. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak to this item? David, anybody on Zoom?
No hands raised.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Jeff?
So I guess I have a, a couple of questions I'd like to ask. What about fire protection? I believe that's a volunteer fire department in that area. Have you talked to them about that? And what about the drainage? Is, is that a pond in the middle between the runways, or where will the, whenever you pave over the ground, it means the water's not sinking in? And then how, how about security for theft of the planes or other type of damage? As we know, planes can be hazardous. And I don't think I've been to another planning commission meeting where we used the word trapezoid, but anyway.
Gentlemen, address some of these questions.
Nothing like a five-part question, so thank you for that. First off, the, all of requirements for drainage issues would be adhered to and followed through all the standards that are necessary and required by the state or county, for sure those would be followed. The fire protection would certainly be an item that would need to be covered along with security, and, you know, I think the intention later would be to include a fence that would prohibit anybody from getting in this area without authorization or access of some sort. That would come later, much later, though, as everything gets developed. And as well with the fire protection, whatever is necessary, whatever is needed per the township, for any recommendations, those requests would be met for sure.
Answer your questions, Jeff?
I'd say that was pretty darn good. That said, I'm, I know that that is, I think the Hartford Fire District there, and probably, I don't know, it's probably in between. Yeah.
Doug and Pat said at 26785, we're under Wayne Township.
Yeah.
And we, we do not have a volunteer fire department anymore.
Contracted with the city.
So we're contracted with the city. And I'm pretty sure this would be under the city, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak to this item? And there's no hands raised on Zoom, is that right? David?
No hands are raised.
Okay. Would you like to step forward, sir?
Do I need to state my name and address again?
At least state your name.
Tom Monin, I'm one of the petitioners. I would like to just say a couple things.
Could you speak up, sir, so that he can hear you back there?
Can you hear me?
There, that's better.
Okay, sorry about that. First of all, the, the pictures of the residential airpark that you saw, if you saw an aerial view of that, it is all completely surrounded by residential housing. I mean, there's no farm fields out there at all. It's, so the idea that the airpark needs to be 10 miles further out is, I think, not an accurate statement. What makes for a successful residential airpark are a paved runway, that's number one. Number two is proximity to a metropolitan area. In other words, the, the, and then the third thing is good access roads to that metropolitan area. So those are the top three things you can do to increase the chances of your airpark being successful. I know, anyway, to correct a couple things that were misstated here, there's not 13,000 residential airparks, there's 630 residential, there's 632, something like that, residential airparks in the United States right now. So it's not a new idea at all, it's just new, new to Sioux Falls. But the reason that I showed this particular airpark is because it's the most like what, what I think ours will be. And anyway, I think it fits, fits right in with, it's all residential around it, there's no commercial, there's no industrial, so the idea that can't fit in with residential, I think, is not an accurate statement. The other thing I'd like to correct is, we had stated that the, I think I heard something like the runway was 41,000 feet long. It's not quite that long, 4,100 feet long. But anyway, those are just minor things, but I just wanted to correct anything that, that was not quite accurate. I realize that most peoples, most people in this area, if they know anything about an airport, it's most likely the Sioux Falls Airport, and I understand that, but, you know, and there's F-16s and airliners and stuff flying in there, and would I want a residential house next to the Sioux Falls Airport? Not very, not very bad. But this is a totally different animal. We don't have, we're not going to have F-16s flying in there, nor airliners. I think if you were to put a, a decibel meter out along 41st Street, once, you know, five years after the airport's there, and you would find that the traffic going by, well, let me back up a minute. So the FAA has done a noise study on the Sioux Falls Airport, and they have a map that shows the decibel levels out so far, you know, and where they're at and all that stuff. So I called the FAA and said that I would like to get a, a noise study map of the Lincoln County Airport, the T Airport, to see how it compared to the Sioux Falls Airport. And anyway, I talked to Bismarck first, and then got told to talk to somebody in Minneapolis, and then I got told to talk to somebody in Chicago, so I ended up talking to, quote, the noise study expert for the Great Lakes Region, which is an eight-state area, which South Dakota is one of. And they said they don't do noise studies on general aviation airports. And I said, why not? They said, well, typically the traffic noise around, going past the airport of a general aviation airport makes more noise than the airplanes operating in and out of that airport. So they don't do noise studies. And I said, okay, so do you have any restrictions or recommendations as far as residential housing next to a general aviation airport? And they said, absolutely nothing. We, so anyway, I, 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 I believe that a residential airpark isn't, isn't going to adversely affect the quality of life for the residents who live around the airpark, not even in the airpark, but around it. And can you show that picture of that airpark down in, down in Florida? I wanted to show you that, because, anyway, in, in preparation for this, I knew that, that noise would be a big issue, or I assume it's a big issue. So I called 10 different residential airparks to, uh, no, there's, there's, I'll, I'll tell you when you get to it, there, right there. Okay. So anyway, I called 10 different residential airparks and asked what percent of the people that live at your airpark are non-pilots? Anyway, I got answers from 25 to 50%. So I decided to call down to this airpark here called Spruce Creek, which I believe is the world's largest residential airpark down in Daytona Beach, Florida. And I asked them how many airplanes they have there, and they said over 500. And I said, how many, how many residences do you have there? And they said over 1,500. And the reason I thought the picture was helpful is you can see there's housing off of both ends of the runways, of the runway, I should say. So if, so I, so anyway, I said, so what percent of the people that live there are not flyers? And they said, well, we don't have an exact number, but about 2/3. And I said, well, what is it that would make, that would draw, you know, 1,000 residences to live there that don't even fly? And they said, well, I guess it's our country club atmosphere. You can see they have an 18-hole golf course, eight tennis, eight tennis courts, and a whole bunch of other stuff, but anyway. So what I thought, what I think is important is, nobody has to live there, they choose to live there. And if 1,000 of the 1,500 households that live there don't even fly, yet there's 500 airplanes operating in and out. operating in and out of, we couldn't, if we got all the airplanes in the state, we wouldn't have half that many. So, but all I'm saying is, if it, if, if the airplanes adversely affected the quality of life, nobody'd want to live there. I mean, pilots want to get a good night's sleep just as much as anybody else. And if, if, if people are living at residential airparks who don't even fly, how bad can life at the airpark be? Anyway, that's my, those are some comments I wanted to make. Anybody have, anybody have any questions for, Lee?
Madam Chair, Tom, approximately, or what do you envision the largest, I'll say jet, that might at some point use the runway?
Well, I don't know how you determine size. Are you talking passengers or wingspan?
Passenger, passenger size.
Uh, 6'8", 6'8" passenger, perhaps 10. I don't know, but probably, probably not bigger than that.
Madam Chair, they've got to come to the.
Sir, you need to come to the podium because some of us and the people on Zoom can't hear either.
This is actually broadcast, and so people, people need to be able to be heard.
Be able to hear what you have to say.
Yeah. Based on, based on the runway length of 4,100 feet, the jet classification that could use that runway length would be what's considered the light jets. So those aren't the corporate jets, those aren't commercial jets. The light jet category typically a Cessna Citation, a Cessna Mustang, five to eight passengers, would be a personal jet, would be that category. So very small.
Okay, one other, I know nothing about planes. How do you determine when you can take off, when you can land with other planes that might be using the runway?
So, so this type of airport would operate a lot different. A general aviation airport operates a lot different than, say, the Sioux Falls Airport. The Sioux Falls Airport is a towered airport, so there's a control tower there. Air traffic controllers are talking to pilots as they approach that airport. At a general aviation airport, you are, you have your own radio in the airplane, and you do what's called broadcasting in the blind. And so a pilot, as it's approaching the airport, and it enters the traffic pattern at key points along the way, when it enters the traffic pattern or it enters the final approach, he just announces in the blind on the common traffic advisory frequency that's designated for that airport. So any other pilots that are in that area are hearing that, that communication. And likewise, a pilot that's on the ground, ready to take off, he does the same thing. "I'm on runway 34, ready to depart," and you say your callsign. And so they're communicating to each other in small airports like that where there's low volumes of traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for them?
Madam Chair, if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
With the conditional use permit, of course, you're going from one existing runway into three. And with that, we go with permit issued just to approach zones into six approach zones. Can you talk about the need for the additional two grass runways? Is it strictly for wind purposes and extend and easily apply in all sorts of weather?
Yes, yeah. If you could pull up, pull up the wind rose. Actually, there's another, another file that I brought, that list of files that I brought. It's called runway usage, that's, that's it right there. Okay, so I can address this a little bit. So this is what's called a runway wind rose compass. And so the way airplane, the way airplanes fly, take off and land, is airplanes want to fly into the wind. They want to go directly into the wind as much as possible that provides that extra lift over their wings. They don't want to fly with the tailwind, it reduces their lift. They don't want to fly with a crosswind. That complicates the landing process. The smaller the airplane, the more it's affected by those crosswinds. So the smaller the airport, and the smaller the airplanes that are using that airport, the more impacts the crosswinds are. And so the more need there actually is for providing runways in different directions to provide all of that wind coverage. Now, our predominant winds in South Dakota, or in eastern South Dakota, are northwesterlies, particularly in the wintertime, and are southerly winds in the summertime. That's our predominant wind. This wind rose compass, the northwest-southeast direction, that's shaded blue on there, that represents the main runway, the 4,100-foot paved runway. Okay? The, the, the wind data that was done at the Sioux Falls Airport for the past 10 years, they record the wind every hour for the 10 years' time, so they've got this large database of weather. Anyway, aircraft, the smaller the aircraft, the less crosswind component they can handle. But the size of aircraft that are using this, they can handle a crosswind component that will cover, I don't know if I can zoom out just a little bit here, or zoom up. The coverage that's provided by the main paved runway, it's hard to read that number there, but I believe it's, it's 93%. So in other words, what that means is 93% of the time, the crosswind is not adverse enough that a pilot can't use the main runway. Well, that other 7% of the time, the crosswind is bad enough, he's gotta, he's gotta take off in a different direction. What we found analyzing all the wind data is that the smallest of planes that can only handle a 10 and 1/2 knot crosswind, 10 and 1/2 knots is like 12 miles an hour. The smallest percent of the planes that can handle that, they would need to use the runway taking off to the northeast about 3% of the time. And that's the, the very smallest lightweight aircraft, experimental-type aircraft. The next size aircraft that's, that's still considered small, single-engine, four-passenger aircraft, can typically handle a 13-knot crosswind. So they can, the only times they would need this turf runway that we come up with based on wind analysis is 1.3% of the time. So the usage of the turf runways is very, very minimal. A pilot always wants to take the paved runway, the longest runway, whenever he can. But if he needs to take off and, and the winds dictate strong northeast winds, there, there will be 1.3% to 3% of the time where that he might use, might choose this runway. So it is very minimal. 90-plus percent of the time, the paved runway will be the one that's used. I think Tom is, I think to answer your question a little bit more, Tom is trying to accommodate, is, you know, the, all the hobbyist type of aircraft owners that might live in an airpark. And some of those very small airplanes, experimental airplanes, lightweight aircraft, that are really sensitive to those crosswinds, he's trying to provide them every opportunity to fly on, in any given wind condition.
Any other questions for him? Guess not at this time. Anyone else want to speak to this item? Please state who you are again, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rick Dunlap, 46810267. Is the strip that's flying towards our development, at the most, would be used 3% of the time. But yet, once that airstrip is in the way, and it's there, that's going to affect our property. I mean, that's, conditional use permit, that'd be the least I would hope that you guys would consider is that that airstrip doesn't need to be there. I beg to differ with some of the things that Tom said about the financing, is when he showed that picture of an airpark, is when you go to finance a house, is a lot of younger people that are going to buy VAFHA, is there's income levels, and there's also maximums that you can purchase a house. And I believe it's raised now at like 425. The airparks are set up kind of like a condo association. And if you do a little research, is that when they're a member of that, they give up their rights. So that if a plane hits their house or whatever, they've given up their rights. If you look at some of the stuff that I sent you in Chapter 20, the compatibility, is FAA, that talks about airparks, they look at them exactly the same as an airport. They disagree with what they're telling you here. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak to this item? No one on Zoom, right, David? Okay.
No hands are raised.
Thank you. I'm going to close the floor. Any comments, county commissioners?
I think there, Madam Chair, I think there still are some issues that are a little unclear to me. At the same time, I think it's a, an interesting proposal, and I wonder if there still needs to be more research on it from, from the point of view of the county, anyway, to determine, you know, fire, security, drainage. Scott, and maybe Kevin, when, when they build this, how does the drainage get, get taken care of? Is that part of their building permit? Or where do we go with that?
All right. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. So I have up in here the proposed map here for the site plan for the runways. When you bring up drainage, I will note that the future kind of floodplain maps is, is likely going to have some floodplain throughout the southern portion of this. So when that time comes, you'll have to be doing floodplain development portions for the property, just along the, kind of the creek lines here. Other parts of it, we can't address drainage now, or we can address it also as, like, the residential parts build up. The city of Sioux Falls oftentimes has things such as, like, the 100-year retention, for example, that we can say, okay, you can only, anything you pave over, you have to have a retention for that water so it doesn't flood your neighbor downstream. And that could be implemented into this plan.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Scott wants to say something.
Go ahead, Scott. Hang on a minute.
I just wanted to also indicate that this falls within the city's plating jurisdiction. So at the, at a future time when this is subdivided and developed into residences, those plaits would have to be reviewed and approved by the city, as well as by the county. And the city is very careful about reviewing these items for drainage, and it needs to meet the city's drainage plans. So there's another layer of review that would occur when the property's platted, so.
Madam Chair.
Who's speaking? Is that Larry, is that you?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay. Go ahead. You have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I don't know if it's city staff or county staff, but how far out does a notification go for this conditional use permit?
Notifications for county conditional use permits go at 500 feet from the property line that's being requested.
So no one in that, that, the graph that the guy, the engineer had up earlier, none of those people that would be affected in those areas were notified at all?
I guess if they live, if their property's not within that 500-foot, I guess it's possible.
Okay. My only concern with that is that, I mean, there are going to be ones that are impacted. I know that we have the typical 500 feet, but to me, that there's going to be a lot of people that could be impacted either by, you know, their house not being able to be refinanced that's currently there, or as the landowners that spoke earlier, I mean, they're going to be affected by height and some other requirements based on this. So I, to me, it feels like a lot of those people should be notified of this so that they can know what's going on.
I, I guess if we are, and we don't, as staff, we don't necessarily add extra feet or extra distance to notifications lists unless it's required as part of the ordinance. Airports do not have that requirement. I, I guess if we defer this, or if we want to take, allow more, I guess we could, the planning commission could request it.
Well, that's, it's, and that's where I was kind of going to go, is that maybe a delay or, like, there's just so many unknown factors. And this is something that, I mean, I've been on here for eight years, and I've never even had an airport ever. And, you know, there's a lot of people that could be impacted by this, that we don't know right, the way, the right questions to ask. It looks like a phenomenal project. I just, I don't know the questions to ask, and, you know, the impacts to other people around is my only concern.
Okay, duly noted.
Can I speak on that, Chair?
I've already closed this floor, sir, sorry. County commissioners, any comments?
You know, I think it's not unreasonable to defer action and look into some of these other things. That said, it's always interesting to me that people don't want regulation until they want regulation. And it's usually to regulate their neighbors, not themselves. You know, it'd be really tough to put in a new racetrack in this county. It would be, really, it's getting tougher and tougher to put in agricultural animal husbandry facilities. It's, it's getting tougher and tougher to, to do something that blows smoke. At the same time, we all want, you know, hot dogs and milk and automobiles and, and everything. It's, you know, in my experience doing this, which I've done for, I don't know, 15 years, you know, Bonnie could be putting in a yarn barn, and the neighbors would object. It, it doesn't matter what it is. I mean, how tough would it be to put in a crematorium? I can't imagine. So I think that there are a couple issues here. I kind of like the project. I think we should look into the effect it might have on financing. But I, I tell you, they bellied up to the bar first with this airport. And if you want to build 650 houses, maybe you should have built them already. It's, everybody is, is ready to stop somebody else. But it seems to me like the first guy up gets the first drink. Anyway, that's my comment.
Was that a motion at all, Jeff?
I'd like to hear what these mute people have to say.
Okay. Any other comments here at the table? All right.
Can I ask you a quick question, Commissioner Barth? This is Kirk Johnson.
Go ahead.
What, what do you want to see in terms of additional research in the deferment?
I guess I would like to find out if these descriptions of cramping the style of financing and stuff are, how, how much effect they might have. And I'd, I'd like to have staff show me a little bit more about security and drainage. I think it's an interesting project. I think, I think there are just a couple other things. I think we could, you know, approve it or disapprove it, and it'll be appealed to the county commission. And I sit on the county commission, and I'll have to listen to this whole thing all over again. And I'd like to dot the i's and cross the t's before that happens.
Sure, that sounds great. And it would, it would be the second time you've heard trapezoid in a presentation, then, so.
Any other commissioners who are at the table have a comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may.
Mike?
You know, Jeff, I do agree with you that maybe deferment is appropriate in this case. I guess the one comment I do have, though, is this, in my mind, this isn't a new concept. You know, having spent time in other portions of our country, you know, Phoenix, for example, has multiple airports that are completely surrounded by residential homes. So while, you know, here in the Midwest, we have the privilege of having kind of wide-open spaces and are accustomed to having airports and, you know, regions aren't really densely populated, I don't see that that's a stopping factor in my mind for this particular project.
Madam Chair.
Jeff?
So, Mike, do you think we should approve it tonight?
I guess I would have made a motion to approve, yes, but.
So you would have made a motion to approve it? I'll second your motion.
Okay. Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, a motion is amended and seconded to approve the conditional use permit 21-17. This is a roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehouser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
And Ryan Vander Plut?
Aye.
The motion has been approved on the county side.
City Commissioners, conditional use permit number 21-17 has passed on the county side. Do I have a motion on the city side?
Mr. Chair, Kurt Johnson, I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use with the four conditions stipulated by staff. Second, Norman.
A motion and a second. City Commissioners, I'll allow you, any further comments that you would like to make before we take a vote?
Mr. Luke, I want to be voting noes because I feel that there's an impact to the neighbors around that should be notified and put some kind of a disadvantage for their property rights. So I'll be voting no on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukey. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Kurt.
I was going to say, I spent quite a bit of my life in banking when it comes to the financing. I just, the FHA isn't the only game. Now, they're the only ones that typically serve in our neighborhoods, I guess, that would be one thing. But I started to buy a house in Minnesota in my youth, butted a major gas transmission line. The FHA told us, sorry, had replacement financing with the same terms within four hours. So I'm, I, I've just never heard of what we're talking about on these mass residential scales. And I certainly don't think that the approach zones are going to impact any development I've seen out in the, exceeding 72 feet, much less hundreds of feet. I, I just don't see that much of a conflict. So at this point, I'd like to, I'm going to be in support of this. And I'd like to see what the petitioner will do with the state and the FAA as they further their plans.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Johnson. Anybody else that would like to speak?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Urban. And I have kind of parallel thoughts to both of those comments because I think this sounds like a great, exciting project. However, I do have concerns that a number of the neighbors were not notified due to the fairly tight radius that the notifications went out to. And if I were a property owner that was just outside that 500-foot zone, I would want to know that this was potentially considering my property. So I'm also opposed to this motion at this time.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Paulson. Is Albert there or Jason? Are either one of them available?
We have Jason here. If you would like to ask your question, he's coming up to the mic.
Sure. Thanks, Jason. My question is, could you comment on the last paragraph in Albert's letter communicating on this matter? Beginning with, it should be noted, so that you know which one that is.
Well, we, we did send a letter out to Planning Commission with city comments on this. And the majority of our comments weren't so much opposed to the airport. They were more for future development down the line that we would, we would want to wait till the city came out here or got out here with services before the residential portion would start getting constructed. Is that what you're referring to, John?
Well, it speaks to, based on the approved growth plans for the city, additional, I assume that's questions, exist around the items that, that follow there.
Let me grab it here real quick. Are you talking about the last paragraph within there, that it should be noted, three quarters of the property, that paragraph or before that?
Yes, no, that one.
Yeah, those are just our concerns, not so much for the airport or the airport portion of it. As we know, that is allowed with conditions and we do feel the staff, county staff's conditions are adequate for that. Really, our concerns in that whole kind of letter describes future development out there. That would be when the applicant would come in and try and start subdividing and creating the airpark and really creating, if he's going to try and create industrial or commercial uses out there. That would be something that we would be discouraged right now until future, we got out there with our future growth plans and water and sewer and it was available, city utilities were available, and this property was annexed at that time.
Thank you.
Any further questions, commissioners, or comments? Hearing none. We have a motion to approve with the stated conditions. We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Urban?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kittams?
No.
Commissioner Lukey?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Nissis?
Yes.
Commissioner Norman?
No.
Commissioner Paulson?
No.
The item has failed on the city side. Two votes a favor, five votes no.
Okay.
All right, since that was a split decision between the county and the city's planning commission, it'll automatically go, be forwarded to the joint, the joint elected bodies, the, the city council and the county commission. And it'll be forward with no recommendation. So the minutes will be presented to them. And that meeting, what was that date again? I think we read it off March 22nd?
It sounds right.
23rd. So March 23rd at 5:00 at the county, or the city.
Carnegie Downhall.
Carnegie Town Hall.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, we'll move on. There is no old business, no new business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn on the county side.
Madam Chair, I make a motion.
Motion is amended and seconded to adjourn. Roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
City Commissioners, we've had a pass, the motion for adjournment on the county side. Can I get a motion on the city side?
Mr. Lukey, I'll make a motion adjourned.
Second, Johnson.
The motion and a second. We'll take a roll call vote on adjournment. Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kittams?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Nissis? Commissioner Norman?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
We're adjourned on the city side.
Thank you.